Okay, six to follow the meeting order. The first order of business will be the pledge to apply.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, yeah, so just a reminder to the audience, if you're not actively speaking, please keep the side chat to a minimum. That's the biggest complaint of the people online, they can't hear because of the air for coffee. And with that, we will dive right into the public hearing regarding the proposal to open all of the roads for ATV trails. Okay, right over to Richard, give you a brief synopsis.
So, with the development of the railroad in town, the cooperation with the Sportsman's Association, state agencies in the town, there's a desire from the Sportsman's Association to have all of the municipal roads opened up. They have already submitted a request to the state to have all state roads opened up for access. That had a letter of support from this board behind it. And then the next step would be consideration of local roads. Town-owned and maintained roads, not local private roads or anything like that, town roads. There's a map up on the table, it's kind of difficult, but you can see the network that would then be created by also local. We thought that this was going to be a discussion that we'd have come fall and into the winter, with the time you have at all, but the application to the state for trail expansion necessarily dictates that we consider this sooner than we had intended. Because it's all about trail to connection. The Sportsman's Association representative was here at the last meeting, which caused this public hearing, to say that they sought to have residents and taxpayers in Norwood have equitable access to the rail trail, regardless of where you were, it was important to them that folks not have to trailer to the trail if they were in Norwood. You could get there safely. And then there was discussion about local folks here in town taking their trailers to trailier locations and limiting ability for folks from other places to then access the trails. So, the hearing here today, with very slight modification, because I don't think it's in public interest to really entertain it, is every local road in town being opened up, with the exception of Winding Hill as Winding Hill goes up. So, from the foot of the hill where it comes off to Pike's Pit to Chuck E. Ferrin's house would not be, that would be the only section of excluded local road, just because it's not safe. And we have that quick and easy bypass to get to the top of the hill. So, what we're receiving comment on here today, the comment should be addressed to the board, and it's your position for against, or just a general comment, neither for nor against the local roads. Not any road number that's, any road that's numbered or maintained by the state, this is strictly town roads.
Okay, true, thank you. So, I will give you any questions from the public, it's here, yeah, go ahead.
Sheriff Darash, I do have an issue, as I've had in the past prior to this rail trail coming in. Wiggel Hill is very dusty. There has already been issues with four-wheelers up and down the road at night. People bringing their young children with no helmets. It's not even a trail, it's a road, and there's bad things going on already that haven't been addressed. I live on the dirt road, the traffic from the dirt road creates dust. The town tries its best, but it's not good enough. The other thing that I think people should really push is enforcement. Because if you have people enforcing the rules, a local road is only good to access a trail. So, from my house, I can go to the trail, I would have to go downtown. But you or you wouldn't have any reason to come by way because there aren't any trails. It's ATV access is access to a trail, to get you to a trail. It's not to buzz around town, to go out, you know, wherever the trail system are not, there's lots of blue places on that map that are not sectioned for a trail. The other piece on this, I've got an issue with the difference between a snowmobile trail and an ATV trail. For where it's for purposes. I know that there is a trail over there, there was a trail over there, there's lots of water, fog, so on and so forth. So, I think that piece of it needs to be addressed. That's my two cents.
Yeah, wonderful, thank you.
Okay.
Anything, there are smaller cuts in that right here. All right, any other questions or comments about those opening roads?
Yeah, I guess I, I do, uh, I understand that ATVs make dust, but on a dirt road, every vehicle makes dust. You can't take a road out with dust being in the road. I think ATV makes less dust than a pickup truck. And, you know, the purpose of opening them up is so everybody can, I live in, you know, Oak Street. If I want to go with gas, I can do it illegally too. I can't go to Irving's, I can't go to Common Park, I can't go to Ridgeway. I can't get gas legally. I mean, yeah, if you're actually living right on this trail, you can get gas, whatever. But I mean, this is a big town, it's 4,000 people or more. And a lot of people do ATVs, I think it'll bring a lot of revenue into this town. I think if you drive down Route 2 and get a new hamper immediately, there's four-wheelers everywhere, side by side. You're getting gas and buying sandwiches there. And that's bringing revenue to that town, and that you know that it brings way more revenue than they normally would get. I'm just trying to, I'd like to see the town build a little bit, it's kind of a stand, a little teeny, small town that does nothing other than a dump, to get on the map another way.
Yes.
That, that might be.
No, thank you, thank you. The dust is a real concern, I know it's a top priority for the ATV group as well as the town.
Right.
Most people probably, if they didn't live on that road, they probably wouldn't be on anyway. It's probably people that live on that road or close by, that have friends on that road, basically.
It's, that, but I mean, there will be people that want rules around town.
Oh, yeah, there'll be people that ruin everything they do now, so.
That will happen. Anything else? Rule, please.
Yeah, I just, what is the actual designated trail now? Is it Perkins Street? Is that part is the designated ATV, that's what I saw.
Yeah, and it's just. It's all a little gray right now. Yellow, yellow areas right now.
Exactly, you go from Van Mountain down Vine Street, down Perkins Street, down Wells Street, down Depot Street, up to Jayville Drive, then out on the Winding Hill, and you go up through the pit, and then you go down all the way to the merge.
I don't think Perkins Street is an ATV access, I think it's designed to, is it?
All the way out, yeah.
Oh, Perkins, I was a mechanic, sorry.
No, Kennedy Creek is not, I thought Vine Street was right now, but it is, well, it's blue, but.
Well. It's, uh, hold on, we'll, we'll, okay.
I just, I'm curious, Brewdale will be an access road then, according to the state?
Uh, it, it could be provided if the state approved that portion of it for our connector. If approved by the state, yes, it would be.
And how about the present trail? Where do the ATVs go now that they can't access the railroad from, if you're in, is it going winding with the Perkins Street maybe?
If you live on Wilder Hill, you can't really access the ATV trail right now, because you don't have a way to get down here. Uh, you have to run the main road. You have to, uh, tend to be, you're behind all of the maps.
If you live on Wilder Hill, did you?
But if you want to live on Wilder Hill, you can't access the trail by four-wheeler, you could snowmob wheel, but not, those are dead terrain. So, there's various spots in town right now, and you can't legally get your four-wheeler or a side-by-side or dirt bike to the gas station or to the railroad bed to get on the trail. You wouldn't need to get onto some town road or state road, depending where you live.
Oh, that's isn't the case anyway.
But it has, it has, yeah, they do just for anyone, yes.
But to make all roads, yeah, trails, I'm going to say please turn, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
One more thing, is what happens if the state doesn't allow it for safety reasons?
Uh, so if the state didn't open up the sections that are on state roads, right, you would have to work around those. That would be, that would be unfortunate, but it is possible.
Well, safety is a, is a huge, huge issue.
I, I guess with the state, yes.
Yeah, and when you have people totally 60 miles an hour on 139 and.
Sure, that's out of the concern, out of the concern.
You know, you have to be responsible, you have to have enforcement. I, I'm not opposed to bringing business into the town, but I want the town to be responsible. I want the towns to maintain their roads, I want the town to work with landowners because the size of the road, anybody who four-wheels now, knows the size of the roads get torn off. And you're going to have complaints from people if they're riding up and down the roads, and.
I am driving, so they have to ride in the road, not the side of the town road. That's not necessarily the case for this piece right now, but I am driving, so they're open on the side. Uh, rule, please.
I know enforcement would be a big issue because the sheriff's department is severely short-stacked, and also the state, I believe the state.
The state police have a redefined mission, which is not enforcing.
Would include that, okay.
Yeah, there is some real concern with enforcement.
There's a lot of concern, because even now, there are people coming down Route 8. And again, I'm concerned about safety. I mean, the, there's a speed limit of 25 in town, well, most people are more than half. So, that would be most, don't respect that at all, and in fact, plus we have, I don't want people for too long, but there's a couple little people around who are sitting around at 10 o'clock at night, and, I mean, those are things that should be addressed, anyway. That's, thank you.
Thank you. Paul, please.
Yeah, um, I'm generally in favor, hopefully the state will open up the state roads, the town will open up the town roads. I'm generally in favor of that for purposes of accessing the rail trail. I'm generally not in favor of it, it's a terrorist point, where I could go on Airport Road, in Charles Road, Tandy River Road, just ride that whole loop all the way around, day in, day out, completely legally. I, I didn't want, I, I would hate the town roads to become the trails for purposes of trails. I would like that to be limited to accessing either the new rail trail or accessing the A, actually defined ATV trail. I don't have a clue how you implement that or enforce that. So, I, again, but I think there's a distinct difference between the two things, and I'm concerned about just people running all over town just because they can.
Right.
Now, nobody gets in their car and does that just because they can, but, but they will. But, yeah.
No, that, that is a real issue.
It's a real issue, and I like to, I wish there was a way to define the difference. Because you mentioned Wilder Hill, but I have no, until two things happen, I have no legal way to access that trail, which is unfortunate. Because I could go there, and then I could spend my money all up and down that trail and make everybody happy. But people just riding loops all day because they can? I get the concerns on that too.
I, I didn't see that.
Yeah, enforcement.
Wrong, go ahead.
Yeah, uh, well, I hate to be adamant, but if I went home right now and bought a dune buggy chair, a dune buggy, I can legally put that on the road and ride anywhere I want, make all the dust I want in the world, and, and, and nothing you can do about it, okay? So, what is the difference between me being in my side-by-side and, and, and running down to Usula to get a pizza instead of taking my truck?
I don't see any personally.
Right, and what I'm trying to say is, we need to change this town. We need to change a water stop in this town, then we need a drawl, instead of just shutting everything down, shutting everything down.
It's in the voter's hands.
Yeah, let's make this town, I mean, if you literally open up a trail system right here, somebody with a few bucks in their pocket could open up a round, a four-wheel round, just business. Uh, look at 201, they're going, I mean, that's a big business. You know, they ride around your middle, they are through Main Street, all over the tall trail. I mean, if you don't change what's happening, nothing's ever going to change, it's going to take a while.
I think a lot of it is perception.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, they did that, I did the, they did go run around, wheeling tires, the clock can take care of them. They'll get the game wardens, and the clock will take care of that. The people that wanted to go to the store to get a pizza, and build a tank out, and ride around, run out of money, jump on a wheeler, why not?
Thank you. Tara, go ahead. To me, please direct everything to me, we're not doing too great.
On that level is, we have state laws. This is not a town meeting to change a state law. This, this laws are already in effect. If you go and you read the law book, this is what it says. So, it's not a town that is per se making up ATV laws. Somebody's already gone through this and defined this for us. So, I think this is, again, enforcement, you know, bring, bring it in, bring the revenue in, that's great. But enforce it and make it great. And the few bad apples, I mean, hopefully, they'll get caught and get a fine and maybe not do it again, and tell their friends, and if we have a certain game warden out on the trail, you know, at this end or that end, you know, random times during a month, you know, nobody's going to know exactly when they're going to be there, but it's there. And that keeps people into check. And there's a difference between responsible people and the few that are out there that are not, and have already created a bad pathway for.
Yeah, I, I think you're seeing in our area a lot more families, and I think you'll find that it's self-policing. You know, when a family group has, you know, a couple of dirt bikes blow by with unsafe man, they're going to call them in. So, I think that's where you're going to find that the community of ATVers, and they kind of self-police. So, the, I think the bad apples will be remedied out pretty quickly. But we don't really have a way to get more game warden presence. We, we are fortunate with the game wards already, where we do get, but I don't believe we're able to request details.
In fact, we are, and we have, they already have control of the rail trail at the request of the town backing, back right through Parks and Land. And there are actually events that they're going to hold in cooperation with the town and the Sportsman's Association to do random checks, so there are going to be sobriety checkpoints. And it's a mandatory stop of everybody. And it's a program that they really, really push, and we're getting a lot of early attention, especially because of the rail travel they knew here, in a lot, the existing ATV trust. And we have the cameras in the downtown area, as well as there'll be in our邻近slopes downtown, which will, some, you know, the police, they put the app back. There are some incidents, especially in the downtown area, probably more likely to be incidents.
Gary, you have the map?
Oh, yes.
Nice.
All right, anything else from the public or the board? All right, with that, I'll thank everybody for coming, and we'll close out the public here. So, thank you for your input. Okay, with that, we will move to approve the minutes.
I made the motion that we.
Thank you.
Very successful. Approved the minutes on July 20th.
Second, hold on a second, approved, any further discussion? See none, all in favor? Our members' reports, show them up.
Nothing.
Yeah. No, I see they put the hay down there on the ball fields and fills in stuff on that, so that looked great. That's, that's it. I will give it to Richard for the town manager.
All right, we'll try to be clear but quick. Uh, we received our dividends on insurances. We get a chunk back on property cash as well as workers' comp, that was down just a couple hundred dollars over what it was last year. That was pooled wide, it wasn't just us, but nonetheless, that, those funds continue to come back in. Uh, the state in the last couple of weeks has rolled out their new automatic voter registration system that links BMV information with our existing voter registration system. If you go and get your driver's license of Augusta or of the mobile unit, you have the option to then provide additional information and have that sent to a town or update your information on file. Circle back to that in a minute, but that's something that we're working on here. Next week, the end of the week, I'll be at the managers' conference, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, I'll be online, but out of the office. And then wrapping up administration, Efficiency Man has asked us to be their feature for the next rollout of programs. We've taken care of the lighting upgrades in all of our buildings as well, as well as the heat pumps. Um, and so I granted them an interview this morning. They're also looking to host an in-person event, sort of a revenue cut, sort of a thing. Uh, and if that happens, it's going to be the last week of the month, and what we want to do is we want, if it moves forward, I think what we're going to do is this building here, where you've got 50s construction, and then in addition, and the upgrades we're able to do here, and then go to the, pretty near Brandon Fire Station. And a couple years after that, the improvements that could already be made to that kind of a mill, and so they will feature us with both of those, so that's up in the air, but it is something I told them I was willing to commit to. It's all good news kind of thing for, for us. Um, the DEP auditor came, reviewed all of our records. Uh, and we're now being removed from the stormwater permitting requirement at the airport. It's just a bureaucratic hump to jump over every year, and once a quarter for inspections, documentation, so we've been removed from that just due to operational changes at the airport, where we're not doing any mechanical work ourselves out there. The number of planes getting washed on a regular basis, no de-icing, all of those factors allowed us to get removed. So, we're going to be required to continue to maintain the spill prevention control and countermeasure plan, which needs to be updated, that'll come at a cost. I'm working on that to see if it can get lumped into a brand, so we don't have to pay for all of it, if it's something that we're going to be required to just do on our own. Uh, assessing the new property tax stabilization program, there's information here, you're welcome to read through it. There's not a property attachment associated with it, it does sound too good to be true. But we do have four-page frequently asked questions, as well as the applications here at the office. Eligible citizens, residents over the age of 65 who have homesteaded for 10 years or more would be eligible and that would stabilize their tax bill at this year rate. Going back into the new things, the state is now pushing onto us. Uh, this is a tremendous administrative burden for the town. We're responsible for verifying eligibility, tracking down if they just moved here and have homesteaded in Norwood, where they have been homesteaded for the last 10 years and decide whether or not they're legally homesteaded for 10 years. All of this back research is on us already, when we're taking applications, we're having to look at photo ID to verify that they were 65 as of April 1st, will be 65 as of April 1st of '23, and all of that. So, no reimbursement for all of the time. They've already heard about it, Main Revenue Services has already heard about unfunded mandates. Uh, and the Secretary of State's office has also heard about the unfunded mandate associated with the automatic voter registration system, which is now requiring us to go through on a daily basis, check the database if there's anything, download it, try to find a match. Can't find a match, create a new customer, print off the voter card, mail it up postcard, get the postcard back, then you go back and you cancel out everything that you already done. It's absolutely ridiculous, and it's ongoing. So, anyway, there's an article in your bridge newsletter that came out this last week in your packets about the stabilization program. And so, if you're 65 or going to be 65, take a look at it, seems like a good opportunity, whether it'll last for more than a year, up for wide debate. Cemetery Committee is moving ahead with their plan to have Elias repair stones in Riverview Cemetery in Upper Main Street. Uh, that is going to be done in blocks so that we're able to monitor progress and it's more visible to the public in terms of what they're accomplishing. Uh, at the last meeting, I took feedback about building violations on Red Barn Road, one being at the corner, one being in that recently improved subdivision. Uh, both were violations, in fact, Red Barn Road is committed, got an after-the-fact permit. The owner of the subdivision has been issued a notice of violation, and they are now going to be required to replant the buffer that was required by the planning board as a part of that subdivision. Uh, also, it was drawn up today, drafted today, will nail tomorrow, violation issued against 547 Waterville Road, being the old rolling ring, a violation of the planning board's permit issued. Uh, they are not operating a retail medical marijuana facility by the state's standard. They don't have set hours, they don't have a curbside sign, those two things remove them from state enforcement. However, when the planning board issued the permit, the planning board issued the permit strictly for growing of medical marijuana. There was no retail, there was discussion and conversation about that, the potential for increased traffic. And all of it was said, no, they're not going to do it. So, unfortunately for them, they need, they're going to need to go through the process of trying to expand that permit uh, before the planning board, which they can do as long as it's not retail by state statute. Well, that's what they're going to have to do, is really the recourse. So, pretty much a cease and desist order will be served upon them in the next three days, if everything goes well. The planning board meeting for next week has been canceled, we are waiting to get the attorney's comments back on the solar regulation. So, on September 8th, they will look at that. At a meeting with Joe Higgins, Snowmobile Program Supervisor at Bureau Parks and Land to discuss snowmobile trail-related needs, and what the state is expecting of the town and of the Sportsman's Association. As we move forward, most of the grants that the state is going to be offering, are, they're asking that they get administered through the town. So, later in tonight's meeting, we'll have a little bit more discussion about that. But I think it's largely just for administrative reasons and getting things back to the state, making sure that the reimbursements are coming when they should. Other related to economic development, the cameras, the surveillance cameras that were approved from Main Street, those have now been installed. There are four cameras on Main Street, we have a live feed into this office, and they have the ability to go back 30 days to check there, so, um, that actually came in handy within 24 hours and then being installed. We had the second air conditioning incident on Main Street where people were punching out air conditioners. Uh, we were able to verify not much for them, aside from the fact that they didn't come from Main Street. Anyway, so it, it, I think it's a good deterrent there. Uh, it said 88 liens will be filed tomorrow for unpaid 2021 taxes, that number's down to 83, still a substantial number. The fire safety day at the library with the fire department is this Saturday from 10 till noon. And Public Works, we received notice from Senator Collins' office that the request under the River and Highway Preservation Project has been accepted into the Senate appropriations bill. It's a 90% thing, given her position on the committee. And so, that number was reduced to 2.5 million, which is still the largest number in the area. Uh, and if, if and when that's finalized, it's going to go through the House and then be approved. 2.5 million dollars will come to support a final round of the State River Road project, which will probably be after the fact reimbursement for us. Uh, but then it also opens up for any roadwork, residual funds for roadways along rivers. So, that leaves a door pretty well wide open for us in terms of what we would do with residual funding. Meeting with Main DOT, they haven't forgotten us about sidewalk reconstruction project. This is solely for survey and design, that's all we had planned this season, just a little later than usual, so that's next Monday, I'll meet with them. Usula Days is still coming together very, very nicely, we're going to get together organizational next Tuesday. Uh, next Thursday, the 11th at 9:00 AM, we're scheduled to commit taxes assesses. It's Thursday at 9:00 AM, and tax bills will then go out, hopefully 50 or 60, they'll get married.
Okay, you have a question from the phone.
Go ahead.
Um, so on this 80-something liens, is that high, is that normal this time of year?
No.
Okay, all right. See my law.
I candidly expect it to be a lot more, over 800, it's all checks, so.
Yeah.
We didn't see too many of those.
Okay. Okay. So. All right, discussion action on August 30, or what about 15?
I made the motion that we approve the general warrant number 15 in the amount of $541,460.99.
Second, second, any further discussion? Overhead door. Those are springs and wheels for the old section of the Public Works garage. One door. I think it was to, to the old section of the garage. Okay. Overhead doors, overpriced, to be honest, it's a simple player of the game, it'll probably get relied upon, is that all too low? Yeah, okay, yeah, I was just curious on that. So any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor. Okay, public comment?
Got it.
I have one. On that property tax program for 65 and older, you have to have both owners, 65, just one of them?
Only one.
Cool. I'm good.
Moving on.
Thank you.
Perfect.
In the bridge, it also said that there is a program for older people. And there is no requirements on the older people that's defined in that book. Is there any stipulation? So it doesn't have to be just older people. It could be a homeowner 25 struggling to make it speed, they can come in and apply for that.
They could, they are gonna take a low priority to seniors.
And what's your classification?
65.
Okay.
That was the source of the funding, was the United Way of Eastern Main.
Yeah.
So the goal is to put out one to $200 grants based upon the, doesn't buy a whole lot nowadays. But we'd like to be able to spread it around. Anything else?
Yep. The FEMA grants that we've been anxiously waiting word on. The 2021 grant program, way the government. They started finally giving out grants on Friday, the 29th. It was 25 across the country given out, none in Maine. Total of 5. something million. Talking with our grant consultant, he said that's pretty common, they put up a very low number first to test the system, make sure that the SAM system and the FEMA GO system is all working correctly. So, so they're starting to come out expecting one or two rounds of awards per week now going forward. So hopefully, if we're lucky enough to get that, we should, we should know soon. There was a big holdup in receiving a waiver from the Biden administration on this, by American, recent executive action that works against the fire service in some areas because there just aren't American manufacturers for some things. So they needed a waiver that took several months, so it's been delayed, but it's now, go.
We are after, on that, the bolts washer, Jim was wondering what we had in.
Oh, that was all the SCBA. So, so our 16, S14 currently, 16 is what we ask for, SCBA backs. Those are all dated 2008, 2009 is a 15-year max life on those. And the compressor is older than I am. All the things that go with that are all facing having to be replaced in the very near future. And trying to get it, it's a couple hundred thousand.
I was gonna say, it was quite a price tag too.
It's 190 something bucks. We're awful.
Okay, thank you. Anything else on the follow-up? Seeing none, we'll go forward here. Special action on fire chief job description, opposition posted. So. I pulled six or seven job descriptions from other municipalities, big, small, in between. And kind of blended them together for what I thought was gonna fit for us. And then we held meetings with the fire officers to get their support, to get their thoughts on adjustments that needed to be made. Expectations from the officers as firefighters and as officers to get current chief's feedback about his role and what he stays the next chief doing. Added administrative tasks, you name it. And this is the document that we came up with after three or four meetings with the officers, lengthy meetings, to propose to you for your consideration. That's my vote, and I will defer. If you have any questions.
I, yeah, sure. First of all, there's never, to Richard's point, there's never been one of these, right? So if you look through here and you look at all the duties and responsibilities, et cetera. These are all things that Dave or his designated been doing for years with one exception that I can think of, and that's EMA director. And we had asked that the EMA director be consolidated with the fire chief as it isn't pretty much every other town in some recent county, except maybe this one and maybe another one. Primarily, that's, that's the person who's trained and best equipped generally to deal with emergency. No offense. So, so we got a document, then we said, well, who's gonna fill that? And you start looking at the job duties and you start hoping that you can do it for the same money you're paying today. I think it's pretty unrealistic. If, if you read down through the job duties, I would challenge you to tell me which one doesn't belong there or which one you think we should be getting for free. Because they're all pretty weighty things. And you're talking about, you know, people being responsible in, you know, very difficult emergency times, right? Talking about, you know, leader of people, et cetera, et cetera. There's quite a few things there. And so after a bunch of thinking and talking, we said, this is really a part-time job. And, okay. Who's gonna fill that? Who, who is, who else there needs a part-time job? Well, it turns out, there's a couple of categories of people that might need that type of part-time job. One is retired fire service people. Places like Scoween and Waterville and I guess there are places like that have full-time firefighters that can retire after 25 years of service. Look at Mike Savage, he's younger than I am and he's retired. Okay? And they still, they get, they get benefits for that and good for them, they earn it. And arguing that point. But somebody who's 45 years old or maybe even a little younger, still might want something to do, right? So somebody who's, who's retired fire service type. And I would throw my, and I know Mike's feelings on it, I won't, I won't go into that, but that type of person. So there's, there's a lot of them around. The second type of person that might be interested is an active career fire service person. Most of them, Scoween, adjustment to this, Waterville, Oakland, Augusta, Winslow, they've all gone to this schedule where the firefighter works a 24-hour shift as 24 hours off, another 24-hour shift and then five days of. And so on a rotating basis, that's, that's two days out of eight that they work. And most, just reality, most fire service professional firefighters have a second job. Maybe in part because they need something else to do, two days out of eight isn't enough for them. But I suspect it also has to do with what they're paid and, and, you know, providing for young family, leasing territory. So many, 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 almost everyone that I can think of either has their own business on the side. Works for a contractor or something on their days off or some of their days off has some sort of means of second employment. I, I know of three of them that have shown some level of interest in, in a job, something like this. There's probably many more, I certainly didn't have a talk to everybody in Central Maine. But if we could connect ourselves with a either retired or active, somebody in the fire service who could bring that, that level of knowledge that the fire service, you know, takes. Matt, you, me, we're, you know, we're glad to help, but we're not the reins behind the operation when it comes to when it comes to, to knowing what the current trends are in the fire service and the current priorities, the current administrative thing, all those things. So to have somebody connected to the fire service, either active or retired, it could be quite attractive. Now, if you, if you were to go to full gear and make a full-time job, that's a whole different thing. It's probably a whole different group of people and probably a smaller group of people. So I think this strikes a balance. And so we talked about it at length and said, you know, for half a salary, if you will, and, and to get a person's half-time to be in the station a couple of days a week, a couple plus, maybe some weeks three, some direct supervision of the employees that are there, some planning and work for future, some administrative tasks, et cetera. It's, it's a good balance and I think it's an appropriate amount of money, frankly, for the duties that you see there. It's, it's a daunting, and it's, you think, okay, I have a part-time job. I work in Donald's, say I have a part-time job. I work 20 hours a week, about 21, only have to think about the rest of it. But this kind of a part-time job, you're thinking about it a lot. You're getting up in the middle of the night, you're going to calls, you're going on your days off, all these things. So it's, it's, it's more than your typical part-time job. So we put it together, structured it in this way. I think we, we have Richard's support, we have the support of the entire department and now we're asking for your support. We think the town can afford it. We've got, at the time officially October 1st comes, we've got approximately three months left in the fiscal year, it's gonna take some period of time to get somebody on board. So you're really only talking about covering a couple of months of the wage, you know, whether it's our money, whether there's enough money in our budget, whether there's contingency funds, et cetera. There's probably a way to cover a month or two of salary and then we'll let next year's budget process put it out, like a budget process, when it plays out. We've gotta make our case and the budget committee, this is like, and have their say and then tell me. So that's what we're asking. I don't, I don't think it's appropriate yet, full-time, but that is coming. That is coming, every town you look at is adding, 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 adding. And it's crazy, we said, I told you two years ago that Trump was coming. It's coming, it's, everybody, Scoween is double their full-time force five, six years, from six to 12, Waterville's adding five or six right now, Winslow just added a bunch, Open's added four, Augusta has, I can't tell you how many. Five single digits. There's just. When you see towns like Anson doing this type of thing. Coming. So someday it may be full-time, this is a thing, appropriate place to start.
I, I like what all those looks, so I, again, thank you. Do I go through you, Richard?
Fireway.
Jim.
Fireway.
So I had a couple of recommendations I talked to Richard about, glad to see them in there. So I hope they strengthen this up a little bit.
Question I had on the yearly stipend, 25,000, I think that's appropriate. I feel bad for, you know, someone who's worked all these years for their insurance and done all the work, but I think this is appropriate to get someone to that level as a stipend. How do you anticipate the hourly wage? So we start with a 25,000 stipend for the year for me volunteering to be the fire chief and putting my life aside to get all these things done. If I decide, or you decide that the fire chief is gonna be working 20 hours a week? If I decide, all right, on Monday and Tuesday, Wednesday, I'm off from my regular job. If it's one of these fire experience people, I'm at the fire station, I'm supervising people. Am I collecting an hourly salary while I'm there for my 20 hours a week and the stipend? Or is the pay when the tones ring, I have to go to mandatory training, those types of things?
So the, the goal was, the stipend is for the, the scheduled time at the station and the level of responsibility that you're taking on.
Wow, what a deal.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, seriously.
It's a deal for the town.
It is.
And, and then when the tones go off, you're paid to attend the call just like we are right now. And if the training, you're paid to attend that training. Could you argue that? The part-time fire chief was at the station today, because today was his day. And then the tones come off and he doubled it because he got paid for both. That's why it's a stipend, that's why it's salary. This is what you're doing for the responsibility level. You come to a call, you get up in the middle of the night, you do all your, you're paid by the hour like everybody else.
And the insurance, which I think is.
Insurance is in there, there's a, a small item that we add in about uniforms, we've gotta take care of that. I'm not suggesting, I don't think they are, we haven't spoken about it actually. I don't think that necessarily challenged by the dress uniforms, but I'm talking about stuff that you wear every day like a firefighter's dress. That, that's what I meant, like, thought of it last minute, gee, there's probably something said there. As it's been, as you know, firefighters buy their own dress uniforms. If the chief, whoever that is someday, wants to try and change that policy, then great. But we're not looking to change that policy, do we?
Thank you.
Was that it?
That's perfect. No, I think that's very reasonable.
Yeah, I, I'm glad you asked, because I thought it was the other way. I thought it was the opposite, so that is even more valuable, so, yeah.
Would it, on the?
Well, it's on the P P's there, I actually thought it was the other, that they would, so.
Well, well, maybe we need.
Yes, no, we're just late to change that.
If it's not clear, maybe we should add some words, but.
No, I think it's fine.
The way I described it, you're.
Yeah, fine, but.
Well, you work that out to the manager, or how's that?
We're looking for your support just to, to fund it. Because I think we all know that we could probably find a way to fund it for two months, that's not.
Yes.
It's the ongoing support that we're looking for from the board. Because budget season's, it's gonna be like tomorrow, right? So.
No, I think that's brilliant, I, I think if we can get someone to do all of these duties for that price, we are indeed getting a value.
Well, you can have that.
Yeah, right, we have, we have.
It's every four years.
I'm not there, sorry.
So no, I.
That's the bottom line, if you look at the job duties.
I've done it for 46 years, I don't need the number.
If you look at the job duties and you say, you know, which one of these don't we need? There's nothing there you can search out. And then you say, well, which one of these can we get for free? You can ask me to do it for free.
And you probably will, but we thank you, man.
I, I will tell you that I'm not currently a candidate for any potential opening, how's that?
I think this isn't something new, I've been telling you this for long as you guys have been on board and before that, this comment. Charlotte's been around a long time, she's heard it. It's just.
Need something in here like all other duties appropriate in the sign, like a caveat and everything at the end. There is, okay, yeah, I didn't see it. Oh, I see it, and it's relevant, I got it.
The last line, many jobs.
Of course, right, and everything else.
And everything else that we forgot to say.
So the, the one thing, just so it's all very clear, is when I'm talking about compensation, compensation does not rest with me. This law has the exclusive right to determine the compensation of the fire chief. So either when it comes down to annual reviews or whatever the fire chief and adjustments to pay come to this board.
Charlotte, did you guys start that one?
Oh, no, I'm, I'm for it. I'm like they said, I've seen him do that and more for a lot.
So if you do the math, we all know about 2.5.
It's a little bit, which, which accounts that, can we add on the count?
It can all work out with people later.
No, excellent. So, I mean, do you want motion on this or do you just want the head nod that everybody supports it?
I have no, it is a new job description and what if we're to move ahead and post a meeting statement?
So. Watch in a second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, and that's it for now.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, appreciate it. Okay, special action on TIF committee recommendations?
All right. Before we get down to business, business, TIF committee is reviewing a couple of different. Before we get down to business, business, uh, TIF committee, uh, is reviewing a couple of different items, one of them being a fence. Option or an hire option, whatever you want to call it, the county square downtown, something that created more defined, uh. Area of park space from what's gonna be behind it at the rail trail, so they're exploring that, they're getting some price books for that, um. And we should hear more about that soon, uh, from them. The. Run of the last meeting with TIF committee dealt with the Ashley Wing Mall or the park improvements in the parking area. Uh, it's done before this board before, we had a public hearing with regards to it. Uh, the one item that was before the board that the committee that night was the unfunded gap, uh, in the budgetary estimate. For the parking area and access to trail improvement. Uh, that was thirty thousand dollars. And by a vote of four to three, the TIF committee recommended appropriating that money, uh, to finance the gap costs associated.
Excellent. Uh, with that, so you're gonna need the official motion from us on the, uh, thirty thousand. So also make that motion, I'm gonna be tenting according you want on that.
Customarily, it's a motion to accept the TIF committee recommendation to appropriate up to thirty thousand dollars from. Taxing from a financing account. To fund the remaining portion of project cost associated with parking area development and actually they would give them more.
Although I'm not gonna say it.
I'll second that.
We get into the discussion, I'll move in a second, uh, so, discussion?
Yeah, so. I'm in agreement with this, I guess, at this point, um. So for the TIF fund. So where, this is the first thirty thousand out of this account for this project, I know the state has dedicated additional revenues perhaps in future years for this. What, do we have a plan moving forward, are we checking with the TIF on more money that we're gonna need? We talked about building a garage, putting porta-potties out there, doing walking paths, doing fences. Do we have a plan, or this is evolving as we move forward a little bit?
This would take care of the parking area, improving the access from that parking area and existing parking area to the rail trail.
Okay.
It also covers the, um, covering for three porta-potties. That structure that would then insert in.
I'm, I'm sorry, I missed.
The porta-potties.
Yeah, okay.
Ideally have a structure that covers three porta-potties.
Okay.
In device handles and everything like that. That is included in this.
So not like a.
Not a garage or anything like that.
I mean, not a, like you go out to like George and you have like a.
Holding tank.
So this is a, just a shelter, like a picnic shelter, you're gonna put a few porta-potties. Okay.
Essentially. Yeah, it's exactly what it's gonna be because of maintenance, volunteer maintenance, you can get a company committing clean it once a week or twice a week, kind of policy of it.
Yeah.
And. We don't have to have that done at the terminal, I suppose, that's a bloodwork badge. Uh, so that's that, the reason that this is here is the first step is because of sensitivity of it, if this trail's gonna be open for winter, we would like. Ideally for folks to be able to have access to that.
So as we move forward with this plan, I mean, the TIF committee has to review these projects, they have to approve additional funding for this. I just don't want, you know, I don't want TIF bringing in now seventy or eighty thousand a year.
Hundred and forty.
A year. One forty. Um, you know, I wanna make sure that we're using this. You know, we've got a lot of downtown revitalization, we've got a lot of stuff going on. Um, as long as we're gonna have a look at these before they go through.
Yeah, everything has to go through.
TIF. All right, thank you. That's it?
Okay. No further discussion, all in favor? That's everybody? Thank you, TIF committee, for their work on that. Uh, right, so we'll move on to discussion action on appointed committee member conduct policy.
Uh, this initiated as a request of the rec committee, uh, and. Uh, not inconsistent attendance by some members. Uh, and they found that frustrating when we, a rec meeting, you don't usually, most boards of the committee meetings don't have an audience. The rec committee now has an audience, people come and they sit and they wanna be involved, and so it's frustrating for the members there on that committee to. Have folks that are on the committees that are taking up that vote seat that then are missing. Missing and not allowing them to form, when you've got folks that are here regularly that want to participate, who are willing to take that seat. So that spurred this onto you folks, you folks asked me to pull something together, uh, six or seven towns. So we invented the wheel, we went and, uh, used some of theirs and tweaked accordingly. Uh, I sent you a draft last Friday, I got some feedback from Jim on a couple of items. And so on page two of that, under attendance, you will see some red line, and that's the reference to the draft version of that in your tactics. Early on, so, uh, this is a draft form, if you wanna edit it or not, or cam it or accept it, it's all over the place.
So who want to, who want a motion in that discussion, or who want a discussion, how would you like to do that?
Uh, I would probably go with a motion and then go with a discussion.
Yes, I'll make a motion if you approve the. Let's see, appointed committee member conduct policy as.
Motion second, so we'll open up for discussion.
And I've got a couple of questions, so on section five, attendance. Does members' attendance at meetings is critical to any committee's success? Three unexcused absences or five absences within one calendar year may be considered submission of the member's resignation. The select board may act upon that resignation at any time after review of the circumstances surrounding the member's attendance record. It is each member's responsibility to notify the committee chair and or the town manager of the absence to be granted excuse. So I like the concept of that, I'm just concerned with the may. So five absences within a calendar year may be considered submission of the member's resignation. And the select board may act upon, is that too, is that too wishy-washy? I understand why you did it.
Yes.
Because it opens the door and allows some flexibility there.
That's correct, um, with extenuating circumstances, you don't necessarily want to trigger the, I missed five meetings and go out and I resigned. You're gonna review the circumstances around.
Anyway, so if you worded that, um, five absences within one calendar year will be considered submission of the member's resignation, the select board may act upon that resignation at any time after review of the consequences. I think that would probably be more.
Less wishy-washy.
It'd be strict, because we still have the option to say, hey, they're out with five chemo treatments, you know, that's not a resignation. My concern is, you get someone who's not participating in a committee. Even if they, if I call Matt, Matt, I'm not gonna be there every other Wednesday for the next year. That's an excused absence, but when I hit five, we get to look at that and say, all right, we're getting the act around here, let's do something about it, so. I think that first may. Should be a shall or will. The other issue.
Quick note for those that are online or in person, this is only for appointed boards and committees, no impact on elected officials, that's only done by ordinance required.
So the other one, I, I can't, I've tried to get past section four, number one, I can't quite get past that, um, so I would ask that we change it or strike it. Member conduct, the following is a list of member expectations that should be observed, expected conduct. Includes, but is not limited to, number one. Decisions made by a committee will be supported by the members as a whole regardless of how an individual member votes, and I can't. You know, it's a democratic process, as I mentioned, you're not. We can have everyone agreeing on a particular issue, if I don't agree on the school board, well, that's an elected position, but as an example, if I don't agree on the school board budget. And I wanna go out and tell people, hey, don't vote against this budget because, or. I'll use another example of the downtown revitalization plan, the property maintenance plan. Um, was in support of that, but that was a, do we have a committee look at that, I can't remember. Or did we just draft that?
You asked the planning board to initiate it and refuse some of the select.
Okay, so if we had a committee that was looking at the downtown revitalization plan, where your grass had to be three inches tall, your shuttles had to be a certain color, you know, on and on. And bring merit. If as a board. We didn't all agree on that, and that was going to the town meeting for election, which it did. Um, you know, if I didn't agree on that, I would share that with my friends, hey, vote this down because this isn't, or vote for this, this is great, and I may not be in compliance with everybody else. So I guess that would be my example of why I don't like. Number one, I think it's a great concept. But I don't think it's realistic, and you don't want someone on a board sabotaging the work that you're doing. And hopefully they wouldn't, but. I don't think that's realistic, so that was my only other concern with the policy in place.
And I, yeah, Jim, you're good, you're good. Hey, yeah, I think, I think. Yeah, no, I. It is, it's there with the best of the tensions, but he's right, uh. I, I do, I think we just strike it, we just, yeah, we took it, we stole from Trina, so, yeah, doing them wrong.
Another town happens?
That, yeah, oh, okay. You, you can't just make this into. I have no issue with striking.
Okay.
Just remove it completely.
Everything else looks good, I, I like everything else, I think it's a great policy to have in place that's gonna really. For those committees that get frustrated when they need a majority. To pass an issue, uh. Any of those types of things, you need some type of consensus to move this work along, and when people don't show up at meetings and they've said they're going to, this is a problem, so I do like the concept of the policy. Thank you for your answer.
Okay, I will take a motion.
Um, yeah.
So we've done a first and a second, so we have to vote for that, vote it out.
Uh, yeah, I guess we will a little bit.
Okay, yeah, so I'll make a motion to amend, um, two items, so we're going to strike in section four, we're going to strike. Bullet number one. And in section five, we're going to strike the first may, and I'm gonna make that a will or a shall. And the rest of that looks fantastic.
Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? See, that's everybody.
Thank you.
Your amendment, now you gotta vote on the policy. That was a motion on your amendment, so now you need to vote on the total policy.
Make a motion that we accept the policy as amended for the.
No, you just need to all vote on it.
Oh.
Okay, so all those.
You have the motion.
Okay, all those favor the policy. So everyone. As amended. Excellent.
As amended.
Thank you.
We'll see how it looks in the minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Uh, right.
All right, thank you. Special action on snowmobile and the municipal grant application.
Right, so this is what I was, uh, talking about earlier, uh, snowmobile and aid. Municipal grant application program is what's administered by Bureau of Parks and Land, specific to snowmobiles. We have the same one for ATV, the ATV one is the one that's funding the parking, uh, development, uh, this year. So this is the recurring item, uh, and pretty much it, from local perspective, it will require contribution by the snowmobile club. Or an in-kind contribution, ideally labor from the snowmobile club, so that there's not a cost to it, and it's a ten percent cost share. So, uh, if they were gonna give us. A piece of grooming equipment. We have a ten percent shared responsibility, so no funding mechanism here, I'm just seeking the authorization from the board to apply for, um. The snowmobile and aid municipal grant.
So. Motion second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Excellent.
All right, uh, special action on U S O unassigned.
Number thirteen.
Okay, special action on, uh, program director for snowmobile all in ATV municipal grants. So these municipal grants have, uh, pretty much a program contact, construction contact, and then the administrative contact, so I'm the administrative contact for them. The program director is the one that has to say. Be the liaison of the sports association, was responsible for getting us three seats to submit to the state and whatnot. Um, and so my request to you, to authorize me as the town manager to appoint program director, uh, on a case by case grant. On a case-by-case basis for these three.
Second, any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Is everybody too late to add that to the fire chief's? Okay, all right, special action on U S O unassigned fund balance to lose tax.
Your unassigned fund balance, also known as your undesignated fund balance to everybody else, is sort of a surplus. How you balance in your surplus as of twelve thirty-one was a little. Over, about two point three six four million. On the low end from an auditing perspective. We need one point two million in reserve, if we're gonna go to the maximum of what the auditing firm customarily, uh. Recommends that we keep on hand, it's a little over two point oh four million. Uh, that pays all of our expenses with no revenues, uh, that's how you figure out the worst-case scenario for what you need in your rainy day. Uh, town meeting approved you releasing up to three hundred thousand dollars to offset taxes. Uh, this board has customarily authorized the up to amount and then left it to the assessors to apply based upon bill rate. My recommendation to you would be to approve up to three hundred thousand dollars of the unassigned fund balance to reduce taxes.
So. Okay.
Second, motion in a second, uh, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
I, I, can I ask a question about the previous thing or is too late?
Uh, I can circle back to that, uh. Yeah, we'll do another business. Uh. So under that, uh, motion second, any further discussion on the three hundred thousand? No, okay, all those in favor, and that's everybody.
Oh. We don't have to put anything on the, on the agenda for that, okay.
No, I'll kick it to other business, uh, Ruth, if you wanna, if you have a question?
Yeah, um, I'm just curious. About regarding the program director for the grant municipal grants. Does the town work in conjunction with the county? Any of that kind of stuff?
No, the county doesn't have that sort of a structure.
The towns don't try and work together.
Oh, sorry.
Or.
Yes.
Trail rail or still.
In the instance, and this is preliminary, so don't hold me to it, not the gospel. The way things are looking for rail trail winter maintenance, it now appears as though today. Lord Rock Sports Association would be grooming from south of the bridge to Oakland. And the clubs from north would actually come in and groom the north end of our snowmobile, of the rail trail in Lord Rock. Uh, is a cooperative effort, because other clubs don't have, they've got maybe folks interested in ATV, more than snowmobile or whatnot, so. As it seems today, that's the preliminary indication of everything in state, and that would bring extra funding in movies grants to cover that. Based upon mileage really of trail, they look at per mile cost of this type of trail, and then they apply that and you do X number of dollars based upon the funds that are allocated.
Does this person, uh, um, write grants also?
No, this person writes grants. I mean, what we're doing right now is, who I think is gonna be the program director, I've given them the grant application, it's. Pretty streamlined, you know, you've got sportsmanship clubs across the state that they're expected to do this, um, and I think. The application itself is simple enough, it's the administrative end, which is why they're trying to push it back to the towns to be the agent, if you will.
Thank you. I have a question about the. Snowmobile and aid municipal grants. Looking at the application, it looks like the municipality has to pay fifty percent of the fifty fifty, if they give us a grant. They pay fifty, then the municipality has to pay fifty.
So, yes, that's correct, however, there's no pay, because what we do is when we go out and maintain something, when the sports association is the receiving agent. Goes out, spends some money, the expectation is that they're gonna put that many hours in grooming, so they're putting boards in these grooming equipment. And they go in, and then we build back at any time donation of volunteers to grooming the trails to carry out fifty percent.
But who's paying them, where's the money coming to them?
Volunteer, obviously, no, so if Matt goes out, gets into groomer, grooms trails for three or four hours, he's gonna initial it, what's the, what's the. odometer or whatever the time is on the machine when he starts, when it ends, and then that's gonna get rolled up by the snowmobile club, sent it to us. And then that should cover up on our fifty percent of the expense.
So the town. And what is the, um. That's the ten percent?
Ten percent for related ATVs, the programs are different, and the reason the ATV is less is because you don't have people going out and sitting on a groomer's.
Do you know what? How many households in town have either an ATV?
I.
We know what the registration fees are that you pay.
I can't figure per household, I don't, I don't want that to figure. I could tell you how many were registered last year.
Yep, can you, so you don't know. About three thousand citizens, how many? Have ATVs or snowmobiles?
I could tell you how many vehicles we registered last year, didn't count it. And this is our report. And we probably don't have as many ATVs as we have dogs, so.
Do you have to, if you own an ATV in Norwood Rock, you'd have to register in Norwood Rock, so that's may not be an accurate number. I have an ATV which hasn't been registered, because I use it on my own car. I've got one registered that sits in my garage at eleven months and eighteen days a year.
So take care of everything for you? Uh, Dave, please.
It's not a question of concern, I guess. Now that they've got the tracks taken up on most of these things, we've got an awful lot of unprotected railroad crossing, a stream crossing, river crossing. With no barricade on either end, now the trash is on, what's gonna keep somebody that thinks that's a trail and. The, the state hasn't stepped up, I haven't seen any other than pickup trucks parked down along the hill. I just wonder, I mean, you know, there's no railings, there's nothing. There's nothing to keep them from going over there, that's all.
Yeah, it's no good question, and I don't.
Somebody from state should put, between Martin Street and here, there's three or four, between here and Madison, there's another three or four books and trucks. And there's not a barricade on either end of those streams, I mean, it's a pretty.
I know they had the one behind downtown blocked off, the small bridge behind yours, is that still blocked off or no? See, I don't even know.
It is, it's just a, you know, it's not a good one, it just pushes out of the way to go. I just, you know, I don't wanna go fish somebody out of the stream or river, because they, you know. They think, okay, where, where, all you hear about is rail trail. And, okay, well, geez, that's rail trail, rail's gone, so, you know, get out across the bridge here, or end up in the river, you know? I think I've been out there, I've been out there, a few fires out there. He is there and it's, it's a scary situation, just walking out there with a room on full hill.
I was there yesterday.
No, no good point, I'll have Richard reach out, maybe we can make some fair.
Give Richard something to do.
I'd like, yeah, thank you. Other than that, we'll get up to me. I know that they were out when they were, they were adding these signs to the trail to say ATV trail is closed. But I don't know to what extent that happened, so I'll send the message.
I mean, it's a pretty dangerous situation out there right now. It's probably nobody gonna be surprised about the kind of big river, but it's all the little ones. They can catch, if you're up there, you shouldn't be, and next thing you know, you're in a river or something.
And they're not having issues with people riding it already, so I mean, you've already seen it.
I don't, someday when they're done, they can have guardrails on some of those.
There actually is, yeah, yeah, it's all. There's a real issue.
I don't, someday when they're done, they can have guardrails on some of those.
There actually is, yeah, yeah, it's all. Yeah, could be a lot here, waiting for those.
Who's liability is that, I wonder? Oh, in the town, or the state? Somebody gets injured on that with their four wheeler, who did they sue? Nobody, states and municipalities and all.
They was just, the riders may look into the struts. Yeah, long distance post, and that's what they've been doing. Good point, uh, Ruth, go ahead.
Doesn't, doesn't the state, doesn't the town road group have some kind of barriers they can set up?
No, they'll steal them.
I mean, they don't have any of the Jersey barriers.
I mean, we do, but it's not our role, if the state wants to do it, then the state can do it. There's also contract in place with contractor and then we would theoretically be interfering with the contractor's work. We have to understand.
Right, if the state said that we could.
We're not doing it, but we can't, if we do enough of it, we'll do roadside law and stuff like that. The trails are closed, people shouldn't be on the trails, in fact, I have this special business. I'll reach out to the director of ATV at Borough Parks. Anything else?
Question on that prepaid garage. What is that all about?
So that's a tech title, that it's supposed to store the grooming equipment, which again is a high tech. We don't have a piece of grooming equipment sticking there yet. So normally don't we need it, as well as it's supposed to house the potential for our security system. We'll need some type of building or electrical, but there's lights, you need light, you know. So it's a multi-use building, but we're not really clear as to what it should be, how big it should be, where it should be, if it can be, so there's a lot of ifs right now.
And. The town is different. Than the ATV club.
Yes.
As opposed to the snowmobile club. Richard is acting on behalf of these two to do the grants, even though it's not a town responsibility. Because the, it's the state that owns, not the town. So we aren't supposed to be spending our, our town money. Building and maintaining, it's the clubs that if they wanna build a building, then the town grants them. The right to build that building on our, our town property.
So if there is a building, number one, this is, this is purely economic development, which is one of the biggest tasks I'm tasked with every year. So yes, that's what I do and I will write, help write grants for other nonprofits in the community as it becomes appropriate. I've, I find grants all the time and I send them out, the brains received, I think, two thousand dollars in eating fuel assistance. Because of a grant that I was able to locate, not part of my job finding grants for the brains or anything else, pardon? Okay, well, there was a sum of money that came from a grant that I found for private organization that I was able to send and. They were able to get that, is that in my job? No, it's not really, but it's all in the scope of doing what we do to make the community a better place. What we have for economic opportunity, not just for the sports association, but for the community as a whole, is this rail trail and how we're gonna use it. If a building is gonna be located on town property, it will be owned by the town. There will be a lease agreement in place, if there's gonna be an outside organization that's going to use it for storage or anything else. We're gonna have to be careful because then there are certain things that would trigger in terms of liability or whatnot. If anybody's in that building, the piece of grooming equipment, they're gonna have to have insurance on that, they have to have liability insurance to protect town's interest. All of those things, the discussion about a building is that it makes logistical sense to put a building there for the purposes of trail maintenance. Even if not for the sports association, from the municipal interest, spreading things like calcium along rail trail. So the commitment from the board under this overarching proposal is that it would not exceed something to the effect of a three-car garage. This is the cap, this is where it would be, not that that's what it's gonna be, it could be a shed where a side-by-side fits and then that's the end of it. But it is then the discussion about relevant equipment, hosting utilities and whatnot. So the three-car garage was something that is, is the maximum project, what you would say.
Because that's not even. A hundred percent as of yet.
No.
And I'm thinking, if you're going to put that out there, you're taking up more space away from all of what you're doing there to begin with. So why put that out there, you know? Why not put that into town or over here or over there? Again, you're taking away from parking and. Isn't, you're taking calcium, are you gonna truck the calcium all the way out there? The town garage is over here. You know, who makes this decision and overall?
Right, so I, I guess I, we had a lengthy conversation today where I tried to answer one of these questions, but. In the scope of this meeting right now, to sit and talk about hypothetical scenarios of logistics of transporting materials. To a public fireworks garage or a building that may or may not ever exist and then the proposal of the rail trail maintenance and what the third party or fourth party is gonna be involved in. That makes me uncomfortable. But this is, I'm just getting so far into speculation, I don't think it's reasonable or fair for me to answer those questions at this point. So. At some point, there will be a discussion about this. Whether we're funding this through the TIF or whether we're funding it through a grant. At least the board will be having a discussion, it may not be a public hearing, but we'll have a discussion, it'll be on our agenda. So the public will have an opportunity to come in and have comment as we move forward with this plan. So I'm not sold on this yet either, I'm still kinda. Um, we were talking about three border parties and then we're talking about a garage with electricity, so as we develop this and move forward. It's a public process, we're not gonna do this in secrecy or.
I just want my voice to be heard.
I wanna hear your voice, because I wanna hear what the plan is as it moves forward, so.
That's why I came tonight is because I saw this and. When do I get to say something or not say something and obviously tonight's not the night.
So that all is. So there were public, public, public comments earlier in the meeting, but we had a public hearing last meeting and the meeting before with regards to this type of proposal. And then the TIF committee meeting, which was on Tuesday of last week, was another opportunity for that. And then it would have been under the TIF committee recommendation tonight, but to get into the speculation of future buildings.
So right now, we pretty much approved, we approved the survey, so we know what we own. We've approved funding to build a parking lot, we're gonna put up a structure. Technic shelter to have a few border parties under. We've done, have we done trail maintenance to the tree? I can't remember if we've appropriated money for that part of it. But that's about as far as we've gone at this point and as we add to this project, we've gotta find the funding for it, we've gotta get. At least the board's approval as we move forward with this project, so all public meetings.
Benny, go ahead.
One thing I think maybe has gotten lost in shuffle is that public meeting, I thought there was a big positioning about them getting their. The transfix and taking care of the trees and all that, now it's just all going to the parking lot. The grant for a hundred. Ten or twenty, whatever it is. You ran for ninety and then thirty from the TIF. None of that money is going to restore, I mean, people got pretty hungry about Ashley Park, the wild there, and that was part of the sale. Let's fix up this beautiful park that we had, blah, 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 and now it looks like the money is just going to the parking lot.
Uh, yes, the money is definitely. The money that is part, the money that came from the state was never, ever, ever intended to support the development of those trees, ever.
Was there a position to contend to people coming to the meeting that was saying the park happened, there's a big sale? They make the park a place that people wanna go and serve trees.
If that's gonna happen, that's gonna be funded through either grants, TIF, or ARPA. That's not, it can't be funded from Mayor of Parks and Land's ATV program funds.
I just thought it was in there in the right somewhere.
Oh, it's, it's definitely a one for this board, but it is not part of. Brains for the money, brains was a potential, a potential funding source for these projects, but that one specific grant was exclusively for the parking lot.
Is that not what was written when the brochure came out?
I don't know if that was in that asset, because I don't know if we had it at the time, but if we didn't have it at the time that.
Improvements and the boardwalk, you know, the rebuilding of what had been there was in that.
We didn't ever document no boardwalks, I can tell you that, that was not in any document that came out of the office. Right, and it writes candy boardwalks, it's not good for the trees, apparently they want stone and mulch, that's better for the trees. The board is right, looking at the tree thing and what we can do. And that certainly is a priority here of the board to ensure the trees and the improvements to the park. But it's not part of the initial money.
But this has always been portrayed as a multi-phase development. Where any given phase might or might not happen depending on public sentiment, depending on funding, depending on changes of. So it's always been, even the way it was written, it's always been a hundred and twenty thousand estimated for a parking. And a shelter for the border parties. And then potentially phase two is some sort of building. You can think of phase three as lighting and cameras and so forth, phase four, paths to the trees and signs and, and information banners. It's always been portrayed that way. Maybe it's not always been understood that way. But to this point, we're only, the only funding and go ahead so far is phase one.
Can I, can I just make the. The parking lot and all of this would not have happened if that person didn't donate this to Norwood Rock?
Yes.
And I think it's a responsibility, if, if you're going to break that off, I think. This is my opinion, you guys shouldn't lose the fact that this was a gift and maybe do what you can to. You know.
Exactly.
The park.
Yeah, so that's actually, the reasoning behind this, the parking lot actually allows us, because for, I don't know, as long as I've lived in this town, those trees have had nothing, no attention, no one's really cared.
Right.
So with this, we have the unique opportunity to open up for all kinds of different funding options. And definitely.
Yeah.
Everything I hear on the board, it is a priority.
I think that's good to hear, nature.
Thank you guys.
It doesn't get lost in the shuffle because it's. We wouldn't be doing what we're doing without that gift and.
So no, there's definitely not a whole thing self here on the board. Right, it is a priority. We really have a beautiful thing under the last group of years and years. And this truly is the only way that we can assure that we can be confident to keep it going for a long time.
Right.
But thank you. Anything else on the, on the business? Okay, seeing none, I'm gonna close out of business there. Alright, alright, executive session to discuss. Oh, I'm sorry, did you have something on the?
Dave, could I get a motion to add, discussion actually tired of Derek's claim to the agenda?
Oh, okay, yeah, I'll take a motion on that. Second, second? Right, any further discussion on that? Seeing none, all in favor? Okay, that puts it out here. Yeah. So I have a request from a resident at three thirty Borough Hill, seeking reimbursement for tire repair, total of two hundred thirty-five dollars and twenty cents. She has submitted a letter, I told her that in accordance with state statute, I had to deny the claim through the pothole law. I don't have the authority to override any of that, however, the treasury is your will of the town and so. If you'd like, you could award the claim as requested. Regardless of your position, I answer to your motion being affirmative to grant that request, and if you are not in favor of that, that you vote it down. It's theoretically called into the statute of pothole law, where there's gonna be a twenty-four hour notice, it's reasonable, have to be negligent in act. And that's. Just a, they came out of the tire.
That's right.
I've had those before. I mean, I think you name, it's hard enough for me. I don't know if this is the board, I'll just put that out for you right now.
I mean, it is a road hazard and it's unfortunate that it happens, but I've had four flat tires on red diamond road and never thought to have to kind of reimburse me after they graded the road and I get rock testing my tire, so. It is unfortunate.
You can see my drive this week, okay, that's all I'm gonna say. So if we could have a motion, we're gonna have to handle this request.
Start making motion that we approve this request.
Okay, there's a motion to approve in a second. Under discussion, I'm a hard no, just because we all go behind tires, I mean, that could have been out of our own, I don't know this lady and I'm sorry if you're watching. But yeah, no, I mean, I'm driving outside of mountain, I mean, that's a town road and there is rocks everywhere. Yeah, so that's just for me, that's all I have, discussion, any further discussion?
Well, I agree with you. I know what the state offers. And if I had a brand new tire globally, because I hit a pothole on Smithville Road. And I mean, they make you jump through so many hoops to get reimbursed for anything, it's not. I finally just said, I'm just be sure they fix the hole in the road.
When Martin Street was done, we must have had dozen people complaining with the same thing, multiple tires. This sets a precedent, so every time somebody gets a flat tire and done, they're gonna come off and say, we need to replace it. Oh, there's a motion in a second, any further discussion on that, seeing none? Uh, there's a motion in a second, uh, any further discussion on that, uh, seeing none, all's in favor? Oppose, that's her. Good, that's all you need on that, yes, I'll get a letter out. Uh, is that, is that any, anybody else? Okay, all right, uh, executive session to discuss acquisition of real estate property.
Pursuant to one MR setting section four, five, six, C.
Yes, ma'am. Just the second, motion second, any further discussion, seeing none, all's in favor, say goodbye.
Okay, so the motion would be to have Richard, the town manager, um do what?
Do an entered purchase and sales agreement. Yeah.
Do you want a description of the property in the motion?
Yes.
Okay, what, what match?
I know, there you go.
There you go.
The intent or no?
Let's think about it.
Design a purchase and sales agreement on the relevant property.
Yeah.
The contention upon approval and funding approval at town meeting.
And you want that on the list?
Sell it.
No, we don't do that through the warrant process.
So in that motion, you've mentioned town meeting, but we're gonna try to do this in a private motion.
It will be probably a special town meeting on the 8th of November.
Still a town meeting.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Second. Okay.
So motion is second, any further discussion? See none, all's in favor? Next, have fun. Give you a little bit of work to do there if you like that, right? Uh right, so nothing else, right? You contend?
Yeah.
Okay, just one last thing, the motion to adjourn?
A second.
Any further discussion? See none, all's in favor. It's everybody.